The east of the property is currently that pink area. That's the mixed area for the future land use. To the west is currently commercial land use. To, on the zoning, the same applies to the east. There's currently downtown zoning. And to the west and north of the subject property, it's currently commercial zoning. And then to the south, you do have some of that blue area. That's the POI, professional office institutional. In this case, we do have, most of the properties along this area are already commercially used. In this case, this property is currently vacant. It's approximately .34 acres in size. To the north, across from State Road 60 is the church. To the west of the property is retail. And to the east, there's some also retail and offices. The main difference between the two land use and zoning districts that are being requested is the downtown zoning district is more flexible in terms of the uses. It does allow mixed use. In the current zoning, the C-1B does not. So that's really the main difference in uses is the downtown and the mixed-use land use allows some mixed use, hotel motels, residential, commercial. There's also some differences in the development guidelines of the two zoning districts. There is a difference in the floor area ratio, open space, and some of the parking requirements. So the downtown zoning district is our most flexible zoning district in the city. It allows variations of uses and it gives opportunities for more flexible development guidelines than anywhere else in the city. And that's by design. That's encouraged. The, one of the, the reason the applicant has requested the amendments is basically, as quoted in the application, their desire to have more flexibility in potentially developing the property and using more mixed use, et cetera. And they also, it is a continuation of the downtown zoning district directly abutting to the east. The staff reviewed, as usual, the comprehensive plan, the land use element in particular. The 1.9 is the mixed-use policy. And it's applied to areas that are suitable for urban scale and intensities. And that area is found to be the case. As you all know, State Road 60, 20th Street is a major arterial in the city and is in the, near the downtown central core area. And it has access to nearby transit facilities. The land use, the zoning district standards were also looked at in terms of the compatibility of surrounding land uses. Once again, the amendment expands the downtown zoning district that exists now today from the east. It's a consistent progression. It's with the mixed use and the infill pattern in the central core of the city. The compatibility with the zoning map designations was also looked at. And once again, all the properties abutting of the subject property are used as commercial uses. There's, there's, once again, a church north of State Road 60. The property to the south is zone professional office institutional, and it is currently vacant. The POI district is considered a transitional buffer to the more intensive commercial zoning. Change in conditions stated in the application, the property, in order to continue the central core and corresponding development pattern, the applicant is requesting that change. Also, the downtown zoning exists within the neighborhood and it is in that area, particularly including all the properties along the down, the roadway frontage along State Road 60 and 20th Street have that to the east downtown zoning. The level of service, there's really not a whole lot of difference in terms of the level of service from the two existing land use and proposed land use and zonings. The applicant did provide a traffic impact report, looking at the different impacts of potentially developing with the mixed use versus the potential, the existing strip commercial use that's allowed in the C-1B. And the analysis basically showed actually, conceptually, a decrease in traffic if you go towards the mixed use and the, rather than the strip commercial. The area, the State Road 60 area is, the level of service standards for the traffic there are below the level of service. So there's not an issue with any kind of concurrency or anything like that. Consistency and harmony, once again, the downtown zoning district sets the flexible development standards and the mixed-use character. And this, we could, we would concur that with the applicant that this is consistent with the existing uses there and the purpose of the downtown zoning district. And based on that brief review and the details in our staff report, we are recommending that the planning and zoning board recommend that the council consider approving the change in land use from C to MX and zoning from C-1B to downtown. And we happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the members of the board have any questions?
Yes, Sherri, could you just tell me the property directly to the west of it, is that the florist?
Yes, according to my information, it's a flower box.
Flower box, thank you.
Again?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question to Ms. Fitzgerald, please.
Yes.
When you, in the event it gets changed to the downtown zoning, how high can they go in the downtown zoning when it's changed to that? What's the height?
It's the actual, the height, the maximum is 50 feet, and then you have an additional 15 for embellishments in that zoning district, downtown zoning district.
So that would be?
65 total.
How much?
65.
65 total from the, from ground level?
Correct.
In the downtown zone.
Correct.
And that essentially encompasses how many floors?
Five floors, maybe what?
It's tough to get.
Six, if you lowered it somewhat. Four to five floors.
You'll have to bend over to get through the hallway.
Yeah.
To carry the weight above.
Because there was a reference later on in the backup to four stories, and I was wondering, you know, how that.
That's more of the reasonable, what they would put in there.
Uh huh.
But that doesn't mean you couldn't do more than that.
Okay. My question is referring to this as a downtown district. What are the boundaries of what we consider to be downtown at this point? You know, the revitalization area?
Sure. That seems to change somewhat by timeframe, but right now it's pretty compact, the area for the down, the quote downtown district. It doesn't include all of the purple existing zoning in downtown, if that makes any sense. But I know there's been discussions to expand.
Well, I mean, we have a historic downtown economic development zone. It takes in all sorts of property way out of the downtown. Nobody's ever really defined exactly what the, you know, the.
Because they were talking about economic incentives relative to being downtown, and I was just wondering how that was all going to work out.
I believe, I'm not so certain. I believe this area may already be in the economic development zone. I'd, I don't have the map in front of me.
Okay.
There's sort of multiple districts. There's the Main Street Downtown District, and then there's the, what Tim's talking about, the Economic Zone, which was expanded.
Looks like it's right adjacent to what's.
And then we have our, the zoning code itself, which is the downtown zoning, the purple area.
And that's the D.
DTW that's adjacent to the east.
If you had a draw, that's in color on here. That's, that's where it's at now.
That's exactly right.
And that's it. You don't have any more.
We, well, yes, it extend, we don't have the whole.
Something new?
Yes.
I have.
Very good. We have a map we can show you.
As you can see, the.
The purple is the downtown area.
Takes in the black, this is the actual area, the economic development zone, which is our tax increment financing district.
Right, yeah.
And that, this property is within it, goes all the way out to 20.
2020?
Okay.
Great, very good, thank you.
Sometimes the obvious, the map right in front of us. Thank you, Sherri.
I've been making little notes as I was reviewing all this material earlier. There's an alley that's referenced. It runs in back of, it's our transportation, the south property line, it butts an alleyway. Who owns it and how is that being used? And do we have to consider that use at all?
The alley is sitting right away.
City property.
And it comes into play during the site planning process.
Okay, right. And, okay, go ahead.
The apartment complex that is on 60 and 18th Avenue, that's three stories right now, or is it four, the existing old one?
The, which one, I'm sorry?
It's on, I'm sorry, 19th Place and 18th Avenue. There's, you know, the old.
Yeah, I think it's three.
Is it three plus?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, yes, I know what you're talking about. I think it's three, maybe four, but.
Because I just want to kind of get an idea of the 65-foot height if it was to go with the embellishment.
Like, for example, there's a building in the core downtown area, I'll call it, that's probably the tallest building that's there right now. It's across from the Jetson Store. I'm thinking it's.
That's, those are the, yes.
How tall, at least?
Isn't that, isn't Crum's office in there?
Yes, yes.
That's maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that give you an idea.
And the embellishments, just so we don't have to look at air conditioners and things that are up in the.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Is, there's a reference that this property is now vacant?
That's correct, it is.
Okay, when we go back to, I don't even know what, the page is not numbered, but it's in the backup material in the back. It talks about drainage, and they're saying the drainage impacts are anticipated to remain unchanged. Well, if they're putting up impervious surface, obviously there's.
No, no, they're going to have to meet the new drainage requirements, which can be pretty expensive in a downtown area because of the.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, it was written in the backup, and I was very concerned about that, so.
Right, that was the attachment that the applicant prepared and the conceptual.
I understand.
Site plans.
I just didn't want it to fall by the wayside.
Do noted, thank you.
Let me ask my follow-up question on that. That information, when the site plan, if they decide to develop the property further, the site plan would, all that would be taken into consideration at that time?
That's correct.
So that they would have to be compliant with all, every other. So right now, we're talking about the zoning change on the property, right?
That's correct.
That's exactly right, that's.
So what, what the potential they can do, not what can't, what specifically?
It is like, we just went through in the last hearing.
Exactly, okay.
But in this case, there was more information provided as to, you know, conceptually.
More than, it's not a fact.
Correct, it's conceptual, theoretical.
That's what I thought.
At this point, anyway.
And while we're on the, there was two things I wanted to ask about the alleyway, because that's part of our grid system there, and we have a lot of utilities there. There's, was there any discussion about closing off the alleyway in the future?
I don't believe that would be what we're talking about here.
It's all site plan.
No.
If it was in it, it would be there.
All the businesses that use that depend on that alley.
Yeah, there is, as pointed out, Ms. Shulkey, that all the businesses depend on that alley, so.
Yes.
Yeah, there's definitely a public necessity for that alley.
Yes.
And then we run into a problem when we look at closing an alley.
The other thing, too, when I ask about the height, 65-foot in the DTW zoning, that, that's fairly high, and there's a reason for the, for the 15-foot, you know, the cover-up air conditioning, but you still can go up to 65 feet. When you do the drainage on the property, depending on how it's engineered, sometimes the property has to come above, pretty, pretty high above what we call the crown of the road. And you measure from the grade to the top of the building. So if people are getting concerned about height of buildings downtown, especially around, let's say, your business or your apartment or whatever, you have to think, how high is the building going to actually be from the crown of the road? Because it's depending on what they're going to have to do to bring the property up.
Yeah, we require generally 18 inches above the, you know, so there's some drain. So anything over that, you would, you know, the height start, the measurement of the height would start at that 18 inches.
I'm glad you brought that up. So the heights?
Yeah, this is, it's a little different on the beach areas where we have floodplains and coastal construction control lines, which can really put these building, you know, structures up there.
All right, so what I'm hearing you say is you have the level at 18 inches. You, so if you need to bring your thing up above the road, you got 18 inches, you do your drainage in there.
Correct.
Right, you have to take that into account.
But that's good, thank you.
And then the 65 in, 65 feet is above that 18-inch level?
It, you start at the, yes.
Okay, so you use the crown of the road and then.
Right, but you have to make sure you get, you know, the water will drain off properly, and that's why we do the 18 inches.
So on the 18, what happens if they have to go above the 18 to get the drainage?
Oh, well, no, 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 it's, they're gonna, we'll start with that measurement. I don't have the code, I'd have to look at the code.
That's fine.
But I believe the 18 inches is where you start.
That's a mandatory zero. That's where you start.
That's correct.
Everything adjusts according to that zero.
You know, we have people that come in and want to fill their lots way beyond that. In fact, it causes some problems. We've had a couple of those, but we won't give them.
Got it.
That comes into play.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, even if they fill it up, they don't get 65 above the two, or three foot of fill they put in.
I think Chairman said it pretty, pretty good. That's where you start from.
Yeah.
Ground zero there, period, end of statement.
No, 18 inches above.
Well, that's what I mean, when you start there, that's where you measure from.
All right, any additional questions, staff? Richard?
No.
You're too quiet down there.
I'm reserving my time. No.
You're building it up, you mean, okay. All right, at this point in time, we'll have the applicant, if he'd like to come forward. Joe, I think you've been sworn in, but will you give us your name and tell us that?
Certainly. You have to have the parking in the back, which they want the building in the front. So you're going to get that look, you're going to get that, you know, which is going to be great, I think, for the community. Versus, if you look at maybe the, you know, the commercial strip, which is kind of across the street west of the church, or where Ijalisco is and stuff, that's your typical commercial center, what you're going to get in that district, because you can put your parking in the front. It's the most economical way to develop, you know, a single-story commercial strip center. So the downtown districts and carriages, and it affords, there's incentives for the developer, there's some things that are easier to develop, easier guidelines, in some aspects, like the height. But in return, the city gets, I think, what's going to be a much better product and much better development. And so I think there's incentives and there's, it's good for both the city and the applicant. I have, you know, we don't have a projector here, do we? Do we? Yeah, can we, yeah, can we use that? Sure. Is it the cover thing? These exhibits I'm going to put on the Elmo, you actually have in your packet as well, it'd just be easier for me to talk about if I can put it on there. Okay, we're just going to set them on there. Yeah, that's good. So this exhibit is just an aerial that basically shows you the mix of uses in the area. And the point being, a mixed-use district in the downtown district, I think, is more compatible than what a C-1B zoning would permit. And that is a mix of uses. You can see all the mixes around you. You've got, we have retail to the east, we've got multifamily to the south, we have a church to the north, we have retail to the west, we have office just to the west of that, we have attorney's office well to the east, we have a restaurant to the east, you have the courthouse parking lot, almost catty corner, church across the street, courthouse a little further down. So it's a, it's a mix of uses. And so we think this downtown district is the right zoning for this. Not only that, but we believe it's actually, for this area of the city, changing the land use and changing the zoning is really more compatible with the comprehensive plan than what we have now, for those reasons, because of the mix of uses. Not only that, but your comp plan specifically talks about eliminating and reducing commercial strip centers at, into the west of the core along State Road 60. That would help in this regard. So there are some elements that helps, or is consistent with the comp plan. And I did do a detailed analysis, and I think staff had repeated some of the things as well. But some of those things would be, you know, of course, the incentive, it would afford the developer to redevelop, is, it's cited in two sections of your comp plan, where the city's wanting to facilitate the redevelopment of the city designated undeveloped areas. They're wanting to facilitate the redevelopment and fill of the development of the city designated downtown redevelopment area, of course, which we found out we're in. We're supposed to be facilitating the continuation of vibrant central business core, rejuvenate the downtown central business core area, assist in maintaining the city's role as the principal urban community for all the county residents. The city's identified, we want this to be the business core. Of course, what I said before, discourage the spread of commercial retail strip centers on State Road 60 adjacent to and west central business core, and encourage the development of mixed-use projects incorporating flex, favorable urban planning principles and architectural standards. And that's what I was talking about before, you know, putting the building up front, parking in the back, encouraging pedestrian access as well as the vehicle access, but making the pedestrian access, the street frontage, the thing you want to emphasize, and not a park, parking lot in front of the building. So that's what happens in the downtown district, and that's what we're hoping you agree. We'll see. I have a couple of other sketches, and they were in your packet as well. When we'd have to do a, we have to do a concurrency analysis and a comparison for staff for impacts and what have you. And staff had said, hey, come up with what you think is really what would probably happen on this project and compare it to what could happen in the C-1B. This is what we think would be developed in the downtown district if we were to change the zoning. Now, this is a, in this case, it's a, it's a mixed-use building. We assume retail on the first floor, a floor of medical, and two floors of office, four floors. You coming off a driveway in State Road 60, but you wouldn't see any other parking. There would be parking under the building, and there'd be parking in the back. So you see, you would have a good-looking building on the front, and we'd have pedestrian access, and I think it would go well in that downtown district on State Road 60. I want to show you another picture.
And that, that line on the, on the south is the alleyway?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Oh, that's probably the one that came on the computer.
This is kind of like a typical strip center, that you see them all over the city, and people develop them all the time still, you know. Maybe it has a commercial element, 3,000 square foot of retail, maybe a, you know, a little C-store, maybe a AT&amp;T phone store, and a 1,200 square foot, like a Subway or something like that. And that's the type of stuff you see in strip centers, like right across the street. There's one on 14th Avenue. And you can see the, you know, the access off State Road 60, the parking's right in front of State Road 60. It's not as pretty, it's not as nice. Now, granted, there's less square footage in this, on the site, because you have more required parking. Your FAR limits you a little bit in the C-1 as opposed to downtown. But you're generally, I think, going to see more intense uses, like a C-store, Subway sandwich shops, those type of things. If developers afford the opportunity to do what I just showed you before, it's going to make sense to develop a mixed-use project, especially when you're right across from the courthouse. And we envision it, this, this project would be marketed with attorneys, basically, maybe medical, insurance companies, those type of things. First floor, we're assuming is retail, and maybe that's a print shop, a copy shop, some kind of computer shop, or something like that, that would work with the professionals in the area. And another nice thing about a project like this is you're not going to see a nighttime use typically, where the restaurants and all the virus, you know, stuff's going on in the evening. This is, this is, you know, it's not impacting, and so you're not, you're not fighting each other over parking and driving and what have you. Another thing about something like this, when you compare that to, the traffic is actually a little less, a little less a traffic generator. And, and mind you, these are assumptions of what would be there, but I think they're logical assumptions. And so just wanted to show you that. And that was based, the analysis that we did, and that's what it was based on. Another thing, two more things I want to show you. The building could look something like that. It's four stories, and there was a question about height. And I really don't think five stories, if you think about it's 50-foot to your floor, and if you had five floors, eight times, you know, eight, eight feet plus your mechanical areas, it's going to be really tough, and no one wants to rent an eight-foot ceiling, you know. This is four floors, the 50-foot mark, and I'll mark it on here, on this drawing. The 50-foot mark is right about there. And that 50-foot mark allows a parapet up above and the architectural feature where it gets a little higher in the middle. And that would serve to hide AC equipment and stuff like that. There's a couple of other examples of some photos of some stuff that are in the downtown district, which, you know, we think are nice examples of downtown-type buildings that front the roads that are amenity to the city and asset. Of course, you have the courthouse, Pocahontas Building, which is an old building but redone and a seminal building. And so the, you got, you know, the courthouse, which is basically a very new building, meets the downtown district criteria, it's catty corner from this project. You have projects in 14th Avenue that have been redeveloped and been there for years, but there's a consistency with them all. They've been designed to facilitate the city's vision for the downtown. They look nice, and it's going to be a great street presence. That's what we envisioned on this project. This is the typical stuff you see in a commercial strip center. This is exactly what the comp plan says we don't want to see here. And, and you know, it's, it's single-story, it's parking in the front. It's just not nice. And so, so we say, you know, change in the zoning, there's, there's incentives for the developer, there's incentives for the city, it's consistent with the comp plan, and we think it's a great idea, and we hope you all agree with that.
Questions of Joe?
Certainly.
I do, Joe, then. I saw on the proposed, or hypothetical, that you set for us, is there room out front if, if that person chose to have umbrellas or something out in front of the building? Is there enough leeway in the code to allow you to do that, or is?
Yes, the downtown district allows you to go out into that 10-foot strip with canopies, awnings, and I believe even use of the sidewalk at times. The, there's a 10-foot setback from the property line, so, and I'm going to, I'll put that sketch back on.
It's not, I know it's not specific to the site, I was asking as a general question.
And this is generalities, but you can see on, on this site, the building's 10-foot from the property line, plus you have about an eight-foot sidewalk in front of it. from the property line, plus you have about an eight-foot sidewalk in front of it. So there's really 18 feet of usable area in there. So this is 10-foot in here, and this is really just what the designer thought would be pavers or a patio area in front of the building, makes it more welcoming and part of the, the streetscape.
Joe, with your designation that you're looking for, this is an informational question on my part, do you know of any coordinated redevelopment for this particular area of downtown, sort of what we have in the vision plan? I know there's some stuff for further down on 14th and things, we've seen all kinds of the, but on this particular area, is there any coordinated development plans?
You know...
Or redevelopment plans, forgive me.
I'm not certain a coordinated effort, I know the map that Tim, that you all brought up identified us in that redevelopment area, and Tim, do you have an answer to that?
No, they're still working on their, their plan. They have not gone there. But I don't know of any real coordinated redevelopment. I mean, you know, we have the cultural arch village concept that they're moving.
But that's not in this particular area.
That's not exactly in this area, but I don't know of any.
I noticed there was a lot of reference in the backup, calling it a business core, which seems very appropriate.
That's in the comp plan, yeah. The comp calls that, that area the business core multiple times, the central business core and the business core. And we believe this is part of that. And I can tell you, you know, I can tell you the owner would be more than willing to participate in those type of things as they move forward. I know, because I am one of the owners, so.
But, but you know, the point being, if you want to have the best-looking downtown, individually, everybody doing their thing and being within the code and restrictions is one thing, it's another thing to have some coordination to bring the linking elements together in the downtown area, so we get the total impact that we'd like to have as a city, as opposed to a lot of conforming uses that are hodgepodge against each other. And right now, I don't see it in that area yet of any coordination.
I agree. I totally agree. And, but I think, like I said when I first stood up, I think you're starting to see a revitalization of the area, and I think it's going to start going that way and that way to the north and to the, to the, the south along Old Dixie. I mean, you know, there's stuff going on even on the Old Dixie Highway. I think even the, the little garage restaurant, they did a great job turning that into a nice little restaurant. And you're going to see that. I think that the city, I think, I think that that has to happen, I think it needs to be a coordinated effort. I think in regards to our project, we tried to copy some of the elements of the courthouse, we thought it was a nice-looking, modern version of a downtown building. And, but I think that you're correct, I think that needs to happen in the downtown area. And I think, in my opinion, it should probably go all the way to 20th, up to where State Road 60 splits, which is just another block. I mean, that's the entrance to the city. And I would love, you know, love to see the old building, it's a bicycle shop, maybe redone some, someday, and some of those other buildings. And I think when we start looking at regulations, looking at, not regulations, but, what do you know, charrettes, and, and working on a coordinate, coordinated effort for that whole downtown core, it's going to be an asset for everybody.
Yeah, and I think one of the big things is dealing with the twin pairs.
I agree.
That to me.
That's the biggest item.
So, you know, that'd be a catalyst. But one thing about the Economic Development Group, they are looking at various elements to tie in the downtown, particularly looking at, you know, streetscape and those kind of elements. They haven't got into the building design. I mean, that's a great idea, but you know, it's just kind of...
Coordination happens there.
Coordination moving along, that they're bringing other groups in, trying to coordinate together, and know on that, it's not a perfect model, but it's starting.
Right, it's starting, and you know, the downtown district itself, even that zoning district, like I had mentioned, does have some requirements that are different from other zoning districts, like parking in the back, buildings in the front. And you know, those things could be expanded as well, more like the overlay district we have on the beach, you know, and that could happen in the downtown district, and probably should someday.
Joe, is there enough, do you feel there's enough flexibility within the zoning you're asking for, to be able to give us that to a number of buildings that may choose to redevelop in that area? Or is it, are we too rigid, are we too loosey-goosey? I mean, usually people like yourself don't say we're too loosey-goosey.
No, no.
On the other hand, are we too rigid?
I think the downtown district has some great flexibility, and you've seen, like the seminal buildings, some stuff 14th Avenue have been redeveloped, the old furniture mart, and some of it's been 10, 15 years, but they did a fantastic job with it. And if they were in a C-1 district, they would be in, not in compliance. And they may be restricted on some of the things they could do, or expansions they can make, but the downtown district allows that flexibility. In my opinion, probably downtown district could get some more teeth from, not so much a redevelopment point of view, like you're asking, but from aesthetic point of view, for those type of things, you know, almost like the overlay district on the, the beach side. Start looking at aesthetics and start adding a few more details.
Even if you're talking about plantings, and even if you've talked about lighting fixtures that are consistent to...
Absolutely. And you see in some of the really nice downtowns, up and down the state of Florida, in the downtowns, they do have consistent lighting, they have consistent, and...
Benches, everything else.
Well, that's what they're working on.
And they're working on it.
We've seen some of that happening, very progressive downtown.
And that's what this group is trying to do, because they've gone into all that.
I think we're going the right direction, Johnny. You can sure feel it when you're downtown, you can get the feeling you want to go there. It's not like it used to be when you...
Yeah. I wanted to try to address just a couple of questions, because I know, like, honey, you, you had asked about the unchanged drainage.
Yeah.
And what I meant by that is, I was just doing a comparison of if it was developed at C-1B, or if it was developed in downtown, there's no change, because we'd have to meet the code requirements either way.
Okay.
That's what I mean. But regardless of whether it was in C-1B or the downtown, we would have to meet the city's requirements, the St. John's requirements, and essentially, we'd have to clean up the stormwater and make it less water off and less pollutant off than it is now, in its current condition.
Perfect, thanks.
You had asked about the alley, and Mr. Dej, maybe you asked about the alley, too?
Yes, I did.
That alley, there would be no plans on our part, and I don't think the city would, there are alleys that the city's allowed to be abandoned. In this case, I can tell you there's a sewer main right down the middle of the alley, and many of the businesses to the east of our property, the only way you can access those businesses is through the alley, the parking. And I don't, I don't foresee the city, and Tim would probably agree with me, that alley's not going anywhere.
Historic value.
And actually, with what this gentleman's talking about, with the alleyway there, it also serves as a service. That's where your garbage truck comes in.
Your deliveries.
All of you have been part of VISION's programs with the redevelopment, urban infill, they encourage that. And I think you actually, to my knowledge, on this piece that you're talking about, there really hasn't been any redevelopment there for many, many years.
No, this would be considered like an infill.
Right.
There are old driveways from State Road 60 going on this property, too, curb cuts. I imagine there's probably a home there at one time, you know, maybe 20 years ago.
I guess what I'm, the point I want to make is, you actually, since you're one, you said you're one of the owners.
Yes.
You actually have a chance to actually set the bar a little bit.
Right.
There hasn't been any, any new building there, as far as, one of the things I liked on your sketch is the little overhang. It kind of copies the downtown theater a little bit.
Yes.
And you did take in the elements of the courthouse. You actually, we don't have any, any design standards that you have to adhere to, but if, if your other owners are up to it, you can, you can start, you can start the bar if you're actually going to build.
Right.
Are you going to build?
Yes, we intend on building.
Okay. That's, that's actually...
We'll be submitting, if I can get the down, if we get the rezoning, when we get the rezoning, we'll be submitting a site plan to Tim.
But it's, it's... Not subject anything, right?
It's, it's a start, and it's, actually, it's a nice, it is really a nice start, because I don't live very far from the property, I'm very familiar with the area, obviously, I've lived here a long time. Nothing's gone on there for many years, that whole stretch there, if you stand at where the little welcome sign to Vero, and you look to the east, nothing's really happened in that middle section there. In fact, this would be, in my humble opinion, a good improvement, you know, to start with.
We agree.
Joe.
Yes, sir.
Two things. Number one, if that, if that westbound lane that fronts your property were modified in some way to accommodate parking, which I think...
We would encourage it, and we'd love to see that.
Are you, are you a part of that movement?
Oh, absolutely. The more, the more parking, the more pedestrian-friendly you can get, the better it's going to be. And, you know, now, on this layout that we did, which this is a layout we like and we want to go forward with, and I know you're not supposed to consider that, but you had to make a, we have to make some kind of assumptions. We, you know, we realize, although the downtown district really, you know, eliminates a lot of requirement for some parking, you have to have some parking, we think. And so we provided what we thought were, was ample parking and underneath the buildings and stuff like that. But additional parking on the street would be great, and I think not only for this site, but especially the sites to the east that are really limited on parking. You know, if you, if you go to Nick's for lunch...
You can't.
You can't find parking. And if there was a, a, you know, I mean, I think State Road 60 is four lanes now, I mean, it could probably be three narrower lanes and parallel parking on either side. And I, and I just don't, you know, State Road 60, so well below capacity from a traffic perspective...
But that'll enhance your program, it won't.
Absolutely, it would enhance it. We'd love to see that.
The other question I had was, under this new zoning, are you prohibited from building a strip center, putting parking on the front?
Yeah, the...
I don't think you can put parking in the front.
Yeah, in the downtown district, you can't put parking in the front.
Cannot put parking in the front.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that was the one big difference between the C-1B, the staff didn't mention, that I thought was a big difference, is we have to put the parking in the back, which makes you put the building in the front, and it gives you that downtown urban feel, you know? And that's why I think, one of the biggest assets to, to the city, and to the vision for the city is in itself, just that requirement in the downtown district.
Is there a requirement as to how close to the street you can put your...
We have to be 10-foot...
10 feet.
10-foot from the, from our property line. And on that sketch, that's exactly where it is.
And it, do you have to put it at that point, or can you also set it back to accommodate landscaping?
You could set it back to accommodate landscaping. It's not a built-to line like, you know, in the beach, in the district, they have built-to lines. But on a site like this, you know, the parking's got to be in the back, to be able to maximize your building and maximize your parking, you're going to want to push the building to the front, in our opinion, as, as planners and engineers.
So this would really be the, the first such project within the downtown zoning?
I don't know if it's the first new project, I'm trying to think. There's been a lot of re, no, no, we did the permitting for the United Way, and that's in the downtown district.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did all the design and permitting for that, and for the United Way and for the attorney next door. So that was a new one in the downtown district, and you see that was pushed to the building, parking's in the back.
Right.
And it's a beautiful building.
Yep.
If we get rid of the hotel across the street, we'd all be, we'd be good.
Hotel?
Whatever that means.
Hotel?
Whatever that means.
You're fine, you're fine.
Poor you for not...
Thank you, Joe. Oh, you're welcome.
Additional questions, Joe?
Can I, one other thing, can, Mr. Dej, you had asked about the height and grade, and like Tim said, you know, you want to go any higher than 18 inches above the crown of the road. The other thing that also, it's actually a challenge to even get 18 inches above the crown of the road and meet ADA accessibility, when your, your building is 10-foot from the sidewalk, and you have to allow people to be accessible with, you know, with wheelchairs. It's hard to put the, the building up unless you have, you know, a lot of ramp.
Pulling out the building to get a lot of ramp.
So, you know, in our case, it was a challenge to get it to 18 inches and, and make it all work.
You'd like to have the 18, but then you got a wheelchair ramp that goes down the street.
That's right. So I, I tried to answer the questions that you had with staff, but, you know, I'm happy to answer any other questions, and if you don't have anything else, I'll sit down and listen to you all deliberate.
Any additional questions?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point in time, then, I will open up the testimony and presentation of evidence from the public. Is anybody here to do that? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll immediately close that. Closing argument by the applicant. Joe, you're back up again, do you have a closing argument now?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you want to come to the microphone to say, no, nevermind, I was just teasing you, okay? Closing argument by staff.
We have none, thank you.
Discussion by planning and zoning board.
Rebuttal?
A rebuttal, forgive me.
My applicant.
Do you have a rebuttal for his no, no appearance? Okay. Then we'll move on to planning and zoning board.
I think we've discussed it pretty well.
I'm, I'm very satisfied that the discussion's been thorough, and...
Ken?
I'm fine, I think it's, if it's, they go like they say they're going to go, it's going to be a nice improvement to the area.
An asset.
The other thing, I know that's not part of what you're doing here with this approval, it brings to the front, a little bit more to the front of the discussion on Route 60. And the fellow that was before us, he's very familiar with traffic studies and all the above, it'd be helpful to have those type of people in the room when we start talking about Route 60. There's other business owners that are talking about parking out there, and moving forward with the other things that we're doing with the city, this is actually going to be very helpful. So actually glad to have you part of the downtown area.
I would be very much of an, talking about parking on Route 60, and anybody that tells me that they're going to be backed up into the ocean trying to get out of town, I won't believe that one at all, because there's not that many people behind that to the, you know, to get out of town.
I'm not going to say a word to that.
They left 10 days earlier, we left...
I, I agree with Mr. Dej's earlier comments, that this is a good precedent that we can look, look to. I, I agree with the, with the applicant.
Norm, any comment?
No, I'm in favor of it, ready to move.
I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, well, let's do it. I move that we accept staff's recommendation and approve the, the first part of this would be the quasi judicial period, motion for the comprehensive plan future land use map by changing the future designation from C commercial to M X D mixed juice.
Peggy, are you okay on that?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, do we have a second on that, then?
I second.
We have a person second? Would you like to, through the roll call? You can't smile and do that.
Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lafer?
No smiling, yes. Okay, now we have a second one, honey.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation for the ordinance that's requested to amend the official zoning map by changing the zoning designation from C-1B to DTW downtown.
I second.
We have a person a second, call for the question.
Okay. Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lafer?
Yes.
Passes by to zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, good luck, John.
Much success with your property.
I'd like to see this kind of progress.
It is progress.
The, moving right along as we get into the 4:30 time. This one's probably been the toughest one of the day, so. This is number five on our agenda. It is also, this is legislative, though, oh, okay. An ordinance, the city of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by the city planning and development director, to amend the comprehensive plan future land use map by changing the future land use designation from CV conservation to industrial, for the property located at 4401 41st Street, containing 10.4 acres, more or less, providing for an effective date. And the number on this one is C-15-000007 F L U M map. And Tim, would you like to make...
Well, I found again my chance, yes.
Yes, you do.
Before I start, I just want to point out the, we've got a couple different acreages Before I start, I just want to point out the, we've got a couple of different acreages we show. It's really 10.53 according to property appraiser. I've seen numbers all over the place on this. And in fact, I did a calculation. It seemed higher than that, but I'm using the property appraiser, so we will modify.
Would you like to come back when you get it right?
No.
Oh.
Okay. And basically, this is, it says by the city planning director, but this is really on behalf of the city police department that we're sponsoring. This can be a large-scale amendment, because it's more than 10 acres, so it has to go through a transmittal to the state and that process. Basically, the property is now being used as a shooting practice range for the police department and other law enforcement agencies. What has come to light, this has been a discrepancy for a long time. The police department is talking about making some improvements to the pistol range out there. And we decided this time, it's time to clean up the, the future land use map to, to reflect which is actually out there. And as I point out, that this thing's been a pistol range for at least over 30 years. I think the Police Benevolance Association had it for that. And the current zoning of it is ALIMC, which is one of these airport zoning districts, which allows a mixture of commercial, transit, and permanent residential uses. Of course, under CV, which is conservation, it's supposed to be for open space and conservation. This hardly would meet those requirements. My research of the records indicate there was a discrepancy between existing and zoning was apparently ignored or approved with little or no explanation. I could never find a reason why they would do it this way. When the property was rezoned to ALIMC in 1992, the staff report indicated the zoning was consistent with the CV designation. So there was no way I could
The ALI means what, the airport?
Yes, it's one of their many little special districts, which I'd like to clean up eventually to
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
The existing conditions, it's a 10.53 acre site, has a 28
Excuse me. 5.3.
5.53. Has a 2,800 square foot or more clubhouse and training facility and a shooting range, unpaved driveway and unimproved parking area. There are really no significant features on the, on the property. In fact, it's got some significant liabilities, lead in the soil from the shooting. And also, there is the old abandoned county landfill. There is potential groundwater seepage that, that they have a monitoring well on site to keep an eye on that. So I also looked at the neighborhood land use zoning patterns. And most of the area is outside the city limits in the county, and it's all industrial-type zoning or heavy commercial. They have a county complex to the north of that. To the south is obviously the airport. And basically, all these uses certainly don't point to conservation use for this area. The, the subject site is located within the city electric water sewer service area, but it's not presently served by water or sewer. I believe they have a well system there and a septic system. And the stormwater's not connected to the storm drainage system at this time, just because of its location. Forty, it is served by 41st Street and 43rd Avenue. Both, both those roadways are, have sufficient capacity to handle anything at the current time and then in the future. There's also go-line service right across the street from this property. I did a comparison between the two. It's really kind of an exercise, because under CV, you really can't do much. Very limited passive recreation, no density, intensity, very little FAR is allowed to handle passive recreation uses. And the proposed I would be applied to those areas suitable for urban-scale development. Intensity, this whole area is like that, is based on the current existing uses and zoning. And obviously, the, as I point out, that the underlying zoning, ALIMC, fits under the industrial classification, as all the other such zoning on the airport, which is a special classification. We did the analysis of it. The justification for the amendment, as I pointed out, one, there's really no evidence on, on that property to support even a C conservation designation. And when it was applied to the property, the ALIA2 zoning at the time never allowed any uses except for public and utilities. So I have no idea how this ever got into this thing in the first place. So I'm still mystified. I did the best I could. All the significant environmental lands in the airport are all ALIA2, which is, we do have some conservation errors, but they are looking at making changes in that in their master plan update. I think the change in the designation AI to industrial would be consistent with the existing use, its location, existing use and zoning in the immediate vicinity of the property and with the access to the road network. We looked at the consistency with the future land use change, and I won't bore you with all this, but as I point out in Policy 1.2, which is a conservation policy, this doesn't fit any of the description for a conservation policy. But it does fit better into a land use element 1.11 for industrial land use. So it would be more consistent to bring it under that classification. Also, we looked at ensuring that the, the ALIMC, the intent is this zoning classification would be comparable, would be authorized, be one of those typical ones you would find under the industrial classification. That would bring it into consistency. If approved, the change would officially be recognized, which has been allowed for 30 years or more, and bring the property in compliance to the comp plan with a more appropriate designation of I. So basically, as I said, I keep saying, this is a housekeeping measure. This has been ongoing forever and just hasn't been addressed. Level of service is not an issue. I do talk about it. We didn't get into a big discussion as Sheri, the last two hearings that you, you went into description of the different uses and the, we did not do that. The property is owned by the city. The intent is to keep it in that long-term use. The city has control over it. It would kind of be a needless exercise for me to go through, through that whole thing, to do that kind of thing, because clearly, industrial will have much more an impact than conservation, but it doesn't reflect that use. So unless you have questions of me, I, we're recommending you move forward with this.
I do have a question. Does this have to be coordinated with the airport at all, with their master plan or home security?
It's not part of their master plan.
Yeah, but it's surrounding.
No, they're, they're to the south. It's not an issue. It's an ongoing, it's a
Okay.
If the, whatever they do in the pistol range, certainly, we would coordinate with the airport on any further improvements. But right now, they're, this has been, as I said, this has been ongoing use for 30 years.
Sure.
There hasn't been an issue about that, okay?
Okay. Is there a required buffer here for where it's located?
I believe there's some, some requirements, safety requirements and buffering, but that's internal to these kind of things. It's not in our regulations.
It's a potter.
And that comes into play, we do site, you know, site plan approval. So I'm not really certain. All I know is, my understanding is, they want to do remediation on the site first, which over the, I think they have money in the budget to move forward with that, to do remediation, meaning they want to get all the lead out before they do anything further. And that will take place next year, which they could do without this change. But I want to be sure we're, they're in place, so when they come forward with any improvements, we don't have a, a problem that, hey, I cannot approve an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Is there, I realize they, they need to make it industrial, but is it, any inherent problem implied for future use, another industrial use on it, or?
Well, remember, our marvelous comp plan calls industrial. Everything in the, in the airport has an industrial classification generally, except for some, and basically, it allows commercial uses. It is not, I'm going to try to eventually get these to be more consistent with the other land use designations in the city, but right now, that's how it is, okay? So, yeah, don't be fooled by industrial. It is more of a, it's more of a general commercial base.
And it's owned by the city.
But that's how they identified it, designated in the comp plan.
Because every once in a while, you get an effort, oh, we don't belong in, you know, the real estate business, and so, let's sell all the city properties. And I just was a little cautious.
Based on my talks with the, the group that's the airport, they're doing a master plan airport thing, and they are going to look at some changes in their zoning classification. I think their concerns are that some of the uses that are allowed in there are not compatible as they would wish to bring in new clients. So you will see some changes being done in that. And I hope to, to dovetail that into bringing the zoning more into, other than the airport apron, taxi, and runways, is to bring most of the airport into, under our current zoning. So you, so the uses are similar. And, you know, why they set up, I asked Mr. Menjer, the director of the airport, I said, Eric, do you have any idea why they came up with all these crazy zones? He said, no. He wasn't here when they did it, so he didn't know either. So it just confuses everything, especially when they have different descriptions of uses than the rest of the ordinance.
Tim, I, I have just a couple technical questions. One, did we send out notifications on this like we did every other thing that come before the city, so that adjacent landowners?
You don't have to on a
On this one, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to on
So that's not a necessity here?
No.
So it didn't, it's not a technical problem later on that we get
No, this, and remember, this is not a quasi judicial, and that's when we send out
And just for my clarification, I'm looking, this parcel is actually in the city because the city, or is that a piece of land owned in the county by the city?
No.
No, it's in the city limits.
It's in the city. That's why Little Jaw got on the, on our map there.
That little appendix.
Appendix, that's a better word for it, okay? That appendix there. So that's a part of the city, too?
Yes.
And it's been, it's, okay. All right. I don't have any issues.
I know.
So the UPS facility is?
It's in the county.
In the county.
And it's right next to it, I believe, yes.
I think it's right next door, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Ken?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Manous touched on it a little bit. I could see, hear the concerns with changing the zoning, where, you know, sometimes, you know, it is said we shouldn't be in the real estate business or surplus property or things of that nature. My question is this. The police use it as their practicing range, which I'm in favor for. They do have money in their budget to go into the lead removal. And I know they want to do some improvements there. It's been a, police have used it with other agencies for, forever. Is it leased by the police department, or is it under the direct, direct control of the city council?
Well, I believe it's, it's under, it's under city ownership, so with the city council. I don't believe there's a lease.
All right, so the police department is not leasing it?
No, they, they, they wouldn't be
They can't, can they?
They wouldn't be leasing it anyway. I mean, lease would be if you had another entity separate from the city that would be leasing it, yeah.
Any plans to sell the property?
No, I don't think so. I mean, they're
Because I know the police want to move on doing their improvements.
Well, I'm doing this
I know it's housekeeping.
Discussing with the police chief, just so we could get this. So I have no indication they would want to change the location.
Okay, because I know you're doing housekeeping, and to me, you're doing the housekeeping so they can move forward with their improvements. Right now, they can't really do too much unless you do this housekeeping.
That's correct. That's correct.
If there's no additional discussion, I'd like to call the question. For a motion, for a call for a motion? I already talked to these people. They sit there. We're all in favor, I think, right?
Okay, well, that we accept staff's recommendation. Do I need to say more than that?
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Richard, second it?
We have a first and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? It passes 5-0. Thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful.
The last things we have today, then, are planning and, planning department matters? Are there any planning department matters?
It's that time of year again for us to do the annual report. So if you, Mr. Chairman, what I would thought, I would do is do a draft, send it to you. You'll take a look at it.
We'll do like we have passed.
Then we'll put it on the, the next agenda for the, if that's all right with
I'll be glad to cooperate with you on that.
All right, great.
Are there any board member matters?
Well, we're meeting on December 3. I see there was a posting in the paper this morning, public notice for a quasi judicial
It'll be go-line. The go-line facility, yeah.
Yeah. And I have a question. We were going to do a voluntary annexation. We were going to look at that.
Yeah, they have
They postponed for today.